We can get started with other solicit... right, I'm sure we can, yeah, he'll join us. Okay. Everybody ready? North Smithfield Town Council, September 20th, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you lead us with the prayer and the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. Open forum pursuant to round on general law forty-two dash forty-six dash six. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to be heard during open forum tonight? Nobody? Last chance. Okay, we're gonna move on. So what we're gonna do with the agenda tonight, it's gonna be, we're gonna be moving a few things around for a couple of reasons. One, we have something important that's listed at the end of the agenda that we're gonna move to the top of the agenda. Also, we're gonna move a couple of other things around because some people have attorneys and experts with them that are costing them money, and they get charged by the hour, so we're gonna try to give them a consideration and move them up also, okay? So if everybody can move, can go to your packet, and we're gonna go to new business C. Ms. Alves.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution, which is Resolution of the Town of North Smithfield Recognizing October 3rd as a Day of Remembrance for Amy Jarrett in the Town of North Smithfield. It reads as follows. Resolution recognizing October 3rd as a day of remembrance for Amy Jarrett in the Town of North Smithfield. Whereas on September 11th, 2001, the United States endured a violent terrorist attack leading to the tragic deaths and injuries of thousands of innocent U.S. citizens and other citizens from more than ninety different nations and territories. It was the worst death toll in a foreign attack on American soil since Pearl Harbor. Whereas on 9/11, Amy Jarrett was a twenty-eight-year-old flight attendant working aboard United Airlines Flight 175. One of two jet liners that were hijacked by terrorists and crashed minutes apart into the Twin Towers of New York City's World Trade Center complex. She was among nearly three thousand people killed that morning in coordinated attacks involving four passenger jets. Amy was one of nine Rhode Islanders lost on 9/11. Whereas flight attendants who lost their life while doing their job should be recognized as heroes of 9/11. Whereas, Amy was born on October 3rd, 1973, and was a resident of Town of North Smithfield. Amy was the daughter of Arum Jarrett and Marilyn Trudeau, and stepdaughter of Bruce Trudeau, grew up in Windsocket before moving to North Smithfield in her twenties. She was active in the theater in pageant communities growing up, working behind the counter at the Stadium Theater, and competing for the title of Miss Teen Rhode Island. Whereas Amy attended Mount St. Charles Academy, where she was a member of the National Honor Society, and participated in the drama club. She graduated in 1990 and went on to study marketing at Villanova University. Whereas upon graduating in 1994, Amy began working as a flight attendant for American Airlines and later took a job with United Airlines, where her coast-to-coast schedule allowed her to spend time at home with her family on the weekends. Whereas the Town Council of the Town of North Smithfield desires to recognize Amy's birthday, October 3rd, as a Town of North Smithfield Day of Remembrance for Amy Jarrett. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of North Smithfield, the Town Council recognizes October 3rd, 2021, and every October 3rd thereafter as a day of remembrance for Amy Jarrett in the Town of North Smithfield.
Ms. Alves, would you like to make the motion?
I would like to make the motion to approve this resolution.
Anybody else want a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, could we please note that everybody, all members seconded that, that motion? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. And we already signed all the documents, all the resolutions, so we can get those right out to, all the originals, we have ten originals, we can get them out to the family members as soon as possible. Just give me one second. Okay, we're gonna move on now to old business C. Discussion by Council on other action on recommendation from sewer commission to approve payment to rate pass for update of Town's facilities plan. Mr. Kirby? And I don't know, you know Mr. Dory behind you?
Hi. Bill Dory, Sewer Commissioner.
Nice to see you again.
So this is where we're at, okay? We've discussed this. Mr. Dory explained to us the sixteen thousand dollars, that the fee for the, for the, for the study and everything, and what we were, what we were requesting, just to move this along a little bit because we have a full house tonight, what we're requesting was for you to split it with the town. That was the original request. But since you're here, I don't know if that's something that you would consider, or even maybe considering covering the whole thing, the whole sixteen thousand. We got a big project ahead of you, and it might be a good way to begin.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you. Richard Kirby, on behalf of Silver Pines. Yes, this has gone on for a number of months, and I know that your previous town planner, Mr. Kravitz, I think he's now in another community, was a little forceful with me at times and adamant about paying the full freight. I had advised my client that I thought there were some equities involved that we didn't have to. You've held firm on this. I had a sense that in our prior discussions, you were going to ask for the full payment again and demand it. And I will let you know that I have spoken to my client a number of times, and as of today, they've authorized that they will issue the full payment, and you will have a check by the end of the week regarding this matter.
I didn't demand it, I just asked for it, just it was a request. Thank you.
You asked for it in a very professional way, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're good? All right. Thank you. Thanks for your help.
Just for clarification, though, we're not actually making payment. We're authorizing rate pass to do the study. The study hasn't been done yet.
Correct.
We're authorizing them, so I would make the motion that we authorize rate pass to do the, this study as presented Engineering Service Agreement to do wastewater facility plan to address Rhode Island, the EM's comments on the Slater Village Development Project and the Belcher Avenue Pump Station, and authorize the administrator to sign it in the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars.
Just as a clarification, where, since they're gonna be cutting the check for that, where actually those funds are gonna come from? Should we specify?
Where what? I'm sorry.
Normally those, the funds would come directly out of our, our account, but if...
Well, they will, they'll give, they'll give a check to the town, right? And then we'll deposit it in the proper account?
Yeah, we'll receive the check, we'll put it in the appropriate funds, so, and then upon delivery of the product, we will...
The town alone, the station.
It's also semantics. You're gonna pay the town, we're gonna pay the...
Correct, if I may, and I can't help myself as, but being a lawyer. If, this is an estimated bill for the amount of work that would be done for engineering, we're willing to pay that amount at this time. If it were to go over, we would like to have that conversation with the town at another point.
That's fair. That's fair. Thank you.
Mr. President, can I just piggyback on Mr. Vatney's motion to say that we're not gonna approve this until we do receive the funds? And then we will go ahead and approve this to go forward?
Sure, that's, that's reasonable.
I'll amend, I'll amend the motion to state, to so state that we will approve it pending payment from...
DAS.
DAS.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Oh, so we have a, we have a motion, and do we have a second on Mr. Vatney's motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, thank you. Once again, we're doing a little hopscotching here on the, on the agenda.
Bring the chief up.
Yeah, you read my mind. Chief, go on up. Discussion, we're gonna move over to new business D. New business D. Discussion, vote or other action on purchase of fire truck equipment.
Good evening, council members. We're here this evening requesting the amount of eight thousand seventeen dollars for the purchase of thirteen hundred feet of hose for our, our new engine. That will be purchased from Industrial Protection Services out of Salem, Salem, New Hampshire. They were the low bidder. And, like I said, that's, that's for the new truck, that's supply hose for the new truck. What we're trying to accomplish here tonight, and when I was here two weeks ago, is we're trying to get all this equipment purchased ahead of time because typically, after the first of the year, vendors see price increases. So that's why I wanna try to get ahead of it and start getting some of this stuff in now, along with some of the long delivery times.
Supply chain issue is just unbelievable right now.
I'm sorry?
Supply chain issues are unbelievable right now.
Yeah. So, and this money would come from Fund Twenty, which is the third-party billing fund.
Mr. President.
Ms. Alves.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a thirteen-foot, thirteen-foot hose from Industrial Protection Services for the new fire truck. Thirteen hundred feet hose from the Industrial Protection Services, in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars. And this money will be coming from the third-party billing.
If I can just add to that, the actual full amount is eight thousand seventeen. We're building in an estimated delivery cost of a hundred dollars.
So I'll change my motion to eight thousand seventeen dollars per the chief's recommendation.
Second. We have a second. Any discussion? Any questions for the chief? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Is the truck still on time?
It is, as of now, yes. We're looking at a March delivery date. Okay, thank you.
Okay, in the same, this is something that is, I'm kind of chomping at the bit to hear about, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to old business D. Discussion by Council on other action on update of concession stands and bathrooms at Veterans Memorial Stadium. I asked for this to be brought on the agenda. I requested that Green come along and tell us how we're doing on this. It's... It's a project that's very, very dear to my heart. Okay.
Good evening. Kevin Moran with Green Development. I was last here, I think, in February of 2021 to give an update, and we've made a significant amount of progress since then, but just high-level sort of timeline, just for everyone's benefit. We, we received our final approval in June 2020 on the Iron Mine Project. Part of that was a discussion or an option with the town to pursue the concession restroom stand at Veterans Memorial Park Field, rather. So, so in July through August, we started with that process, doing some additional research at DEM, looking at the flows of the existing septic system that serves the middle school, what they were seeing. We had a pre-application discussion with DEM. It was suggested that we proceed with a system suitability application, which we did. We worked with RGB on a conceptual rendering or floor plan of, of the concession stand, and Dave DiQuattro from RGB will speak to that a little bit more when I wrap up. So another, next step was we submitted in September 2020 a system suitability application to DEM, was signed by the town administrator at the time. We were also researching water service options. There's no water service to the concession stand that's there now, so that was another item we were working through. In October, DEM came back and said an alteration application would be needed. Because we were making modifications, it's just the application process would be an alteration of the existing septic system. But as part of that, they brought up that the original approval back in 2007 required monitoring, reporting of the treatment levels that the septic system was experiencing. That information, I think, at some point fell off the radar collectively from, from, I think, the town side, DEM side. So between November, January of last year, we were trying to track down what information was available. They were looking for two years of data, the last two years. What we found, at least based on the data that we had, was that nitrogen, the nitrogen standard was not being met by the septic system that was there. You know, DEM was clear, they wouldn't consider the concession stand alteration until they knew where the, the system was performing in accordance with the approval. So February, we met on site. I know there were members from the council there, the town planner was there, the operator of the septic system was there, I think someone from the school, school department was there. Looked at the existing system, we were trying to come up with what can we do to have it meet the standards. So there were some recommendations of looking at cleaning products, carbon source, adjusting flows. It's a, you know, it's a, it's an engineered system, there's a lot of parts to it. There's, there's chemical additions that go into it to adjust pH, to help the treatment process move along and get to the standard that we're looking for. So between February and June, there was a lot of work being done by the operator of the system in coordination with the, the original equipment supplier to test the system monthly, make adjustments. And what came out of that is we, they were able to get the system on track to meet the nitrogen standard, well below the standard. So in July, we submitted to DEM the package prepared by Northeast Water Solutions. They maintained the system for the, for the town. Summarized the, the whole history of the, the results, the most recent results, what was done to get it on track. DEM said, okay, continue with the quarterly monitoring and submit the alteration design. So they opened the door for us to really start the alteration design process. So August through September, we did some additional surveying on the site, drone flight to get some data. Worked with the Renko to design what was, what would be needed for this. Long and the short, we completed that design, submitted it this month. So that'll be under their review. I reached out to DEM today to let them know that the application's there, and they, you know, if there's any questions, to let us know. Long and the short, what we ended up doing was providing a grease trap for the new concession stand to collect any washwater coming out of the sink. We have a three-thousand-gallon septic tank, and that all goes together and gets pumped down to the treatment area closer to the middle school. So it'd be duplex pumps. If one were to fail, there is a backup or a second pump there. And that could be monitored, so you, we can see what kind of flows are being generated, things like that. So that's the essence of the design. It's in the packet I gave you. It's a seven-page set. I dropped off a copy for the town administrator, full-size for their records of the whole application. So that's under their review. Next steps would be to complete the building design, and we can talk about that a little bit. File the building permit application, and I know Kerry Anderson's expecting this, once we get through the next stage with DEM and get the full building plans. You know, get into construction. I think one item we did see with the building size and configuration is the memorial that's there at the entrance going from the parking lot towards the field. We'll need to work with the town to relocate that. We showed a possible location on the plan, but I think that would be another meeting with the town to, to work through that. And how that would be done. One thing that is important, and I reached out to the operator for the system for the town, was to confirm they're doing their monitoring monthly, that they're gonna submit their report in October, their quarterly report in October, and they're, so they're ready for that. And just be sure that we're meeting the standards. You know, last year was a, you know, with COVID, I think it was, it was a difficult year, I think, with school partly in session some period of the time, and remote part of the time, so they'll be monitoring it monthly, adjusting the chemical additions, the flow recirculation to, to maintain that standard. High level, that's kind of where we're at. We're now waiting on DEM, but getting ready to kick off RGB, I think, on the next stage of getting the detailed plans for the building. But I thought, we thought Dave DiQuattro could give just a refresher on what they had done last year. We haven't really gotten any feedback on this design in terms of changes or requests for changes. So they're otherwise kind of ready to start. So we can get our DEM approval hopefully, get this to a point, and submit for billing permit. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to take them, or we can have Dave get into the building a little bit.
Just to try to put it in layman's terms, can you give me, give us a timeline possibly?
I would expect DEM, they, I expect they'll be probably quick within the next thirty days or less, would be my estimate to hear back from them. If they have some questions we need to answer, we'll certainly work.
How about a timeline for shovels in the ground?
Shovels in the ground. So permits, billing plans. I know the town's ready to get the billing permit application, and I'm sure get that back to us quickly. Earliest probably, he probably needs a month or so for his plans. It's probably November, realistically. Subject to, all those things falling into place.
Pending DEM approval.
Pending DEM, yep.
That's, that's...
That's the key.
That's the key piece of it.
That's the key. Yeah, we will have to bring a water service over to the building, but that's, that's shown on the plans. We did talk to the, the same operator of the septic system maintains the water system. We've coordinated with them on how we could bring water to this, to this building. And we've got some more detail to work through with RGB on the site in terms of fine grading, ADA access, things like that. So we'll be working alongside with them to advance the plan that we submitted to DEM with more detail for construction.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
I know they're doing the system tests right now to get into compliance. They're working with Northeast Water System, Bob Ferrari, where I'm very familiar with the system.
Yep.
Maybe too familiar with it. But one of the concerns that I have is I know that we have some existing capacity in that system, the operating system today. Do we know what that existing capacity is?
Yeah, the, the, the system was approved for, I believe, eleven thousand six hundred gallons a day. That's sort of a peak flow. Average flow, I think, was around, assumed was gonna be about fifty-eight hundred gallons a day. The average, based on the flow monitoring, was in the order of twenty-two hundred, twenty, twenty-five hundred gallons per day, so well below what it was designed for. And, you know, the case of this is, you know, this may be used during the school, if kids are out doing the outdoor classroom or outdoor, you know, gym, things like that, could be used for something like that. If, if there's a sporting event, you know, some of that flow might have been happening in the school naturally during certain events. It would have to be happening here, so it's not an additional flow. It, it, there may be some additional flow, but we're not expecting it to be a big increase. And if there's a game on a Saturday, for example, school's closed, that twenty-two to twenty-five hundred gallons a day is not happening, very small amount of it, maybe, so...
But what will DEM require us, Dave? Maybe you, maybe you can answer this. What will DEM require us to carry for capacity for that system at the field for a thousand people? We had this discussion fifteen years ago.
Like LaSalle did, we go in for a waiver for the accounts. The building would be four times the size, and it would all have just toilets there. So I think we've got in front of the chart, which shows that our requirement is eighteen, we only have five. So the idea is on an occasion like this, say you have a shared resource, we're not all five hundred people, but obviously we're using the same... all 500 people, but obviously we're using the same. This is, look, we're against this.
That was the concern we had, that's what we ran into when we originally looked at doing this.
Yeah.
Was that we couldn't meet the capacity of the system and run the school with the same system.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, and there'll be a mechanism to monitor flows. The idea is that there's surcharge available at this location to pump down to the, to the existing treatment system, so kind of worked out a scheme with this, some buffering here. If you did get a big flow, it gets pumped out over, not, with, not that same time it comes in.
A metered flow down to the other system.
Metered flow, exactly, yeah. Be pumped out in 100 gallon doses, or 120 gallon doses versus, it's a 1,000 gallons from one event in two hours, that wouldn't all go at once. So, there's a reduced copy of these in the packets I handed out as well, but I'll let Dave maybe speak to this a little bit.
Yeah, sure, if you want to talk a little bit about just the orientation. This is the existing field here. The buildings here is the part of Montevera, opposing the ramp is the great difference. ADA requirements that you have to have access to both levels, so short of putting in an elevator or a long ramp, we use to try to use the resources of the grade around it. So, the first floor plan is basically bridges up above, you get storage in the lower, you give the men's and women's to your left and to your right to the concession stands with access here, and supply access in the back. Then up above, coming into the ramp, there's a press box here, fully accessible into the press box where they can view the game on almost a 270 degree radius, so they go down the field one side, go down the field the other side. And then elevation wise, we need some of the town's colors, taking advantage of the site, you can see on the site elevation coming up the ramp, we decided to use materials that were hard materials, the concrete block, it's going to last a while. So, good paint once in a while, and just so it lasts quite a bit of time. Anyone has any questions?
I just have a, that's not really a question, but just a reminder that, one thing that we discussed when we were all up at the field was, and it could save us a lot of trouble, is if we have the cooking, the grills and everything on wheels that we bring out, wheel, that's still part of the plan, that we're going to wheel out the grill in the back, so we don't have to get all the fire, uh...
You don't need suppression systems if it's outside, right?
Correct.
Bringing that inside, you do need a suppression system.
So, all the grill, we can even have grills or fryolators and everything on wheels, just bring it right in the back, cook everything and bring it right in.
Inside's good for freezers, refrigerator items, or heating items.
Okay. That's still part of the plan. Okay. Anybody else? Anybody in the audience have any questions? Jeff?
Just looking at the elevations, it looks like the ADA ramp, if there were some mischievous kids, they, they could jump right up onto the roof of the restrooms. Are you going to be doing anything to put in place to prevent that?
Yeah, what you're seeing in elevation, the side elevation, is the lower roof, which isn't in plane, those lower roofs are divided up, so you'd have to have a mini rocket to be able to go up and to the right, so there's some distance to go forward. Yeah, I'll show you this.
Yeah, so I'm talking about, they're able to be right here and hop right over to that best point.
Right, so you put, you bring that back, or you put a guard on each side?
He's a preliminary document, just to show you kind of material setting and views, they might feel true.
Just put up a sign saying, "Don't do that," right?
Yeah.
It's not really open to public comment, but I, I started it, so go ahead, no, no, go ahead, I, I started it.
You're going to wheel that out, you're going to wheel, is it a pad back there, is it grass, how are you going to wheel, what are you going to do with that?
Either or, it can be concrete, or it can be grass, or pavers.
I would suggest a pad, because a fryolator full of concrete grease and grass is asking for control. Just, I've been along the way, the pads are a lot, that, try to roll that stuff over, I do catering and stuff, so a pad.
Good suggestion.
He's had his fair share of spills.
All right. Anybody else on the, anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I would like just one thing, so I would like to get RGB because of the time schedule, and I'm hoping that everything goes well with the, the stop, the drawings, everybody besides, we did actually talk about concrete patches, in fact, I would expect it to go on the grass and everything, but conceptually, I don't want to go into a 97% set of drawings and have a lot of input. You guys happy with what you see now, you want to decide if you're happy with it now, so I can let them start designing it, because if you do get a permit in 30 days, it's a block building, it would be nice to try to before we go into the dead of winter, try to get the structure of the building.
Well, that'd be nice. Uh, this, this, this design is not new, I mean, we've seen this probably about a year ago, right?
Yeah.
So, I'm, I, I thought it was fantastic when I saw it, but...
Where is the monument right now, on that picture? On the site plan?
It's right over on the left.
I'm trying to, it's under the, where it says proposed building, isn't it?
Yeah, it's right here, it's like a prime triangle shaped area.
Oh, it's, oh, it's, it's not that far?
So, there's the bricks that surround the, the actual, so there's an area off to the side that you thought might work, and we can, uh...
We'd have to go out and look at the site and see.
Yeah, maybe we can schedule, I'd like to have a plan, but that would need to be removed early on in construction. This, this footprint of the stance.
The existing, the existing concession would be, would be demolished.
Would be demolished, and then this would probably need to be the next, next item, so.
We, we didn't have an, an engineering report, but we never expected to pay the retail for the existing septic to get it, to compliance, I think Kevin Grant, a lot in the last 18 months, you know, to get to that point, and it was difficult with so many different bodies into it. But, one good thing out of everything now is, is you are required to comply at 100% of the school, and I think the, um, supports the project, they've been waiting for it to, waiting for the application to get in, so I, I feel very comfortable that it's going to go smoothly. The, the raised area we discussed, because I went through the Grand Southwest concession plan that they just put up, and they had a second floor, and everybody went up with a ladder, a set of stairs to get to the second floor, and I'm like, we can have a, a press box that is an ADA, like called David, I'm like, hey, how are we going to get through this? And that's why we came up with a ramp off of the back parking lot, and I think ultimately when it's all done, it will work nicely on the spot with the contours of the grade and...
Yeah, I mean, that's some of, that's some of the detail we need to work with RGB on, how that, there's a landing where, how many, but there's definitely room to, enough length to ramp up, there's no, no question about that.
And as you go through final drawings, you and I know, all the underground utilities that are on that site.
We know it all, yep.
Over, under, between force veins, the fire suppression system, other water lines.
All the wells.
All.
Yeah, there, there was good asphalt information, some of it we could field verify, some of it will, we need to do some locating, we actually got a quote from AE, AEI, I think it is, to, to do some utility locating, electric unknown, there's a drainage line we couldn't find, and then the force veins and everything else going out there.
Anybody else?
Yeah, so one thing to add, um, one thing we just have to be aware of is, assuming that the turf field is done by that time, I mean, right now, there's, there's leftover turf that's all over the parking lot, and that's going to hinder trucks coming in and with materials and whatnot, so, you know, I know it's not on the agenda here, but I guess we just need to get some sort of definitive timeframe as far as when the, uh, when the materials are going to be taken out and the turf is going to be completed, so they don't, there's no conflict of, of timelines there.
Yeah, I want...
The, the field is supposed to be done the end of this month, but it won't be, I can, because of delays in, in shipping, but they are scheduled to start receiving these stuff the end of this week. So, stuff will be coming onsite this week to begin finishing the project. It's, it's everyone, you know, it's, it's the standard complaint, oh, you know, can't get it shipped here, and, and the supply chain is broken, they, they use it for everything, you know, like, it, it's real, it's, it's, it's everywhere. But it is coming in the end of the week, and so they, they will start that, you will start to see progress again. These guys are going to be waiting till October to get a, a report from DEM, so I don't think they're going to, I don't think they're going to conflict with each other. That turf is going to be gone, and that parking lot stuff will be gone, and hopefully we'll be using the field before the snow comes.
Hopefully.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, one last adjustment. We're going to, now to, sticking with Green Development, new business A, discussion by Councilor of other action on request of green development for potential storage facility at Iron Mine Solar Farm. I just want to clarify with the clerk that although it shows me here as sponsoring this item, I was, Mr. De Pasquale reached out, asked if he could be put on the agenda, and I put him on the agenda, I'm not really associated with, you know, the topic. Sir?
Good evening, my name is Steve Bruzini, B-R-U-S-I-N-I, I'm an attorney representing Green Development. Tonight, all that's before you is the tax stabilization agreement for the battery energy storage project at the Iron Mine Solar Facility. Many of you may remember me or are sick of me from the many times we came before you on that project, including the tax stabilization agreement, the solicitor and I worked extensively on it. It was essentially a relatively stock agreement, the custom part of it was, although tax stabilization agreements by statute in Rhode Island are allowed to be 20 years, your statute and ordinance only allows 10 years, so we did a 10-year with a town's option 10-year renewal. This is 3,000 a megawatt AC, 32 megawatt projects, so you're looking at just under $100,000 a year for 20 years, or a couple of million dollars for the town, which is above and beyond and on top of any of the tax stabilization payments and development fees that were associated with the solar facility. So, it's pretty much the same document, I worked off the, the, no sense in reinventing the wheel, I only changed it, you know, to note the differences between the solar project and the battery energy storage. We don't have a formal presentation, but I do have the Green Team here, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't have anything in my packet on this. Yeah, I don't have anything in the packet.
Nothing online either. The one, the one question I have while, while we're sorting through this is, if, if they're looking to develop a storage facility, why is it before the council, why isn't it at the planning board, or at the building inspector?
That's not really what we're going to do. Maybe I could...
All right, ju, just before you continue though, Ms. Igliozzi, because the stuff was not included on the packet, could we, uh...
We'll discuss it.
You can discuss it, we can't vote on it.
Okay.
Why can't we vote on it if we needed to?
Because it's not listed on the agenda of the action, I don't see tax stabilization approval of an agreement on the, on the agenda.
I agree with you on that, but what, are we talking about a potential storage facility, or are we talking about tax stabilization agreement?
I just put in the tax stabilization.
Okay.
Actually, if you can't vote on this, you can vote on what you have on the agenda, you can't vote on the document.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know what document, that's why I'm just asking.
If I may, Mr. President, so it's not on the agenda, but it exacerbates it also, it's the materials you have in hand, not the time to, to digest them, so you may just want to take and receive the materials and then...
All right, we'll let him do his presentation, and then we'll, we'll view the documents, and we'll set up another time to make, to vote on it, at the next meeting or something.
Do we have to make a motion to add it to the agenda then, if it's not on the agenda?
If, if this is what you're talking about, if it's people...
That's a tax, that's a tax treaty, yes, it's a red line in the existing, yeah.
So, if, 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 many agenda, I'm sorry, we discuss it, we can vote on it.
Can I see a copy of it, just so I can make the motion, the right motion?
I think I have it. I want that in scratch.
I just want to make the right motion.
Is it a red line of the...
Yeah, I, I think that we were putting the copy for us, I think we'd like to see, hear about the, what kind of storage facility, and then we can discuss, you know, put just the tax.
So, what you have here is just a red line of the tax treaty that we already set forward, and then the tax treaty for the power packs. So, um, let me just give you a little background, so the power packs, originally, the plan has 24 equipment pads on the site, which is about 30,000, 28,800 square feet. When we were designing the site, the proposal was that the transformers, all the power packs, everything, are put on the inverters and the transformers. With that, the $7,000 a megawatt that you're paying is all inclusive to the whole facility. So, all the projects that we're doing, and, and it's on the drawings and everything, contemplated 24 equipment pads on the site, transformers, the battery storage right on the transformers, all one component. While we were designing, we reduced the padded area to reduce the footprint for the impact on the site down to 12. So, now, we were, so we went from 28,000 square feet of the transformers, the inverters, and the power packs, together, all the way down to, let's see, let me give you an exact footage, well, 34% of what we originally were planning on using on the site, so we reduced about 70% of our square footage. The reason I'm here for the tax treaty is, because the battery, which can be mounted today still to the inverter at each location, which is on the original approved drawings, because we wanted to put them in one area by the substation up where the commercial section of the site is, we wanted to separate, not hook them to the inverters, and hook them right into the substation. So, you're looking at, it's 24 Tesla packs, which is two per, two per transformer, which is on the existing drawing, so the intent here was just to put all the maintenance and everything in one location. So, because it's not tied exactly to the transformer or the inverter, I felt that there was a hole there that somebody's going to come back and say, you should be paying taxes for this component. So, on all our projects that are rolling out now, we have batteries, transformers, inverters, all buckled, and, and Matt Acillo will explain it in more detail, all together, it comes in one package. What we tried to do is bring all the equipment up to the substation and cut our equipment quantity in half at the same time. So, it, it's on the original drawings, schematics, just to give you a, a quick thing, originally, again, we had 24 transformers, with each transformer had about six inverters on it on the site, we have reduced that to 12 transformers with the inverters, which ended up being 6,200 square feet, so we reduced the amount of equipment that was in the field, and we brought the equipment up towards the substation, more in the commercial zone of it. On it, each, each pad has two battery packs at each pad, which is about 150 square feet, so by the readjustment, because the battery is not exactly tied to the inverter and the transformer, and I'm going to let Matt get into it in more detail, I felt that there was a hole that somebody would come after and say, we didn't pay a tax treaty for the batteries because of the way we're hooking up. So, we ran a model on it, it's, um, the whole system site is 38 megawatts, the batteries are 32 megawatts, it's to help the grid and to disperse the energy onto the grid, so we looked at this option as a better option on the site, and that's what we submitted on the building permit drawing, so when you see the actual drawings that are approved by the building inspector, there's a lot less equipment on the field in the area, and Matt can kind of talk into more detail on that, if you have any questions, and exactly why. Because, again, because I'm not hooking directly to the inverter and the transformer, I felt that it was a taxable item that was not captured, and I did not want anybody to think that we were trying to put something on the site that you weren't paying taxes for.
How safe are the batteries?
I'm going to turn it over to the guy that knows that much better than me.
But we're still going with a nameplate capacity of 38.6 megawatts.
38.36, the batteries didn't need to be, the batteries are 32.
Now, the, the question of the solicitor, isn't this tax stabilization agreement was based on that nameplate capacity of 38.6? So, so what's the, what's the change in here, or is it just a concern that, that Green Development has?
No, just, I'm sorry for sitting down, but...
That's all right.
You're still getting paid for 38.6 megawatts and 7,000, you're getting that no matter what. What I, what we're proposing here is another $100,000 a year by not putting the batteries on the actual system. So, instead of, so if I just wire the batteries directly to the inverter, the $7,000 tax treaty covers all of us. So, in all our projects, when the state talks about $5,000 a megawatt... So, in all our projects, when the state talks about $5,000 a megawatt, that's the whole system. That's the power pack, the inverter, everything. By bringing them all up to the substation gives us a better way to control everything in one area, not spread it across the site. The only difference is it's not hooked to the inverter or the transformer. So, option one is we just leave it, leave it and hook each inverter and transformer. If we can do that, and the 7,000 is covered right now. Option two is because we have a big substation up top, and the piano, the other thing too is the technology's changed since the first time we began, maybe four years ago, that we have a large area like the substation, and it'll be really considered that we will only put everything in that one designated location and talk about, you know, just some questions if you're talking about safety and all the other stuff that Matt can talk about. For now, instead of having two battery packs at each inverter, you're going to have them all at the substation in one type of area.
In just to further elaborate on that, so the statute that we discussed last time with the solar facility and the Office of Energy Resources regulations that create the 5,000 a megawatt are for energy generation facilities, solar, wind. Batteries aren't considered energy generation facilities. They don't fall under that statute of those regulations. But that's not to say that the town and the developer can't agree through tax stabilization to give tax payments to the town. That's what this was trying to capture. Batteries just, they're neither fish nor fowl. They just don't fall under those, that rubric of regulations and statutes.
So, I just want to preface this to add on to what Mark said. So, we're talking about an original system that was solar plus storage, and that's, that typical kind of system is only utilized really for load shifting. So, the battery charges during the day when the sun is shining and then discharges later on in the day through the same pipe that solar was discharging through. You can't have the battery discharging at the same time that the solar is producing. You only can export 38.6 megawatts, I believe it is. So, now, what we're doing is we're going to have a grid tied battery, which leaves you more flexibility to both charge and discharge to support the grid. It's grid support services. You can do frequency regulation. You can do reactive power support. Having this battery tied directly to the grid gives you a lot more flexibility to manage the loads that are on the grid. That's one of the main purposes of bringing it, bringing it up towards the grid side. You mentioned how safe are these batteries? I mean, safe is obviously, is subjective to what you're referencing it to. But we're proposing the Tesla Megapack, and Tesla is on the leading forefront of battery safety. They're on all the battery safety committees, NFPA. They're UL-listed in every standard that's available for battery storage. So, they're on the forefront of technology. But realistically, we're still working through the ISO interconnection process, and a lot can change in a couple of years. So, the product that they have today may not be the product that gets installed several years from now. It'll likely be a much safer product, but we're going to implement whatever the latest and considerations need to be taken into account for.
Anyone else? Anybody have any questions?
So, can you just elaborate? You said about 34% less. Is that, are you saying that the actual site is going to be 34% less than what?
The 34.2% less of equipment is on the site, even the way we're proposing it now. So, we cut the amount of equipment because of technology, well, 76%. So, instead of having multiple inverters and multiple transformers that are on the planning and zoning drawing, we cut that down from 24 down to 12. And each one of them, and when you look at each indicate, so it's just less equipment because of technology. Another thing you'll see when you go to visit the site is the original drawing, you know, we've got pollinating, and we've already got a lot of grass established. Project will be up and running this year, but there's a lot of areas that really have solar panels now that's actually just open areas because of technology and solar panels that we use. When we started, this, we had the 320s. Now, we're at 415s. So, we have actually more area on the site that's completed and being grassed, so I can't, you know, change anything, but we actually have more square footage for pollinating and just open areas that have nothing on it right now. So, we reduced 70% of the equipment on the site by, because of techno, because of technology and because of the technology changing on the solar panels, reduced how many panels actually sit on the site. As the town looks at it, it'll reduce any of your revenue. Your revenue still is based on the 38 megawatts. It's just less square footage on it. And a lot of these systems, there's a few reasons why I look at it. A lot of these systems, they just hook to the inverter. So, Tesla brings in, and they just, they hook the battery right to the inverter and the transformer, which is out in the field. What we did is instead, instead of having the, that equipment amongst the whole field, just put it in one area. With it being in that one area, each battery contains, has a self-containment of any fluids that are inside of it, which Matt can talk to. But by being in the same area too, then you do, just like the transformers, you build a curb with rubber and stone, and you make actually a area too that if a battery ever did leak out or there was a ton of water introduced, that actually captured in one area instead of rustles.
So, my question wasn't about the amount the equipment was going to produce. My question was going to be, so basically, the footprint of the whole solar project is smaller than what you had anticipated?
It's the same footprint from the fencing, but the actual solar project is smaller than what it originally because of tech, because of panel size and technology.
So, was there a lot more cleared on that property that really didn't have to be cleared now that we're looking at it?
You're welcome to come up. I can send you drone video. Not really, it's just, you see, we spread the roads out a little bit, and it's just the areas that don't have solar panels, like the, we had the corridor, the 300 to 300-foot corridor that for the annual white light. Well, with that corridor, there's additional land there that doesn't have solar panels. So, just, just different areas, and the spacing of the panels was spread out a little bit, which makes it more efficient on the site. But not, I would say, not majorly in that. Up at the substation, there's an area that doesn't have solar panels in it right around the substation that's built. That's where the battery we proposed would put it all in that one area, because you have the National Grid Substation, all the heavy equipment up there, all our big equipments up there. We think that would be the best location to put everything in one zone instead of having it spread across the site. It's, the site's designed to have the power packs in each individual area.
So, you still cleared 180 acres of land to put this in. You just spread it out a little bit more and reduce some of the equipment that's on the site? I think that's what you, that's what you were looking for, right? You wanted to know, did you still clear all that land?
My point is, is we probably cleared more than we needed to, and now we wouldn't be looking at this huge void in the woods. That's what I'm saying. If you're saying you don't, you use 34% less, so that's quite a bit of acreage that.
The 34% less refers to equipment footprint, not solar module footprint. We design our solar modules to perform optimally on the winter solstice, so the shortest day of the year, sun's lowest in the sky, your azimuth to your sun between 9:00 and 3:00 PM, which is the solar production hours. So, during that period, on the winter solstice, you want as minimal shading on those solar modules as possible. Previously, with the lower wattage modules that we originally proposed this project several years ago, there was some shading in between rows, so performance was down. We've maximized that production now. So, same footprint, you're going to generate more kilowatt-hours. Not kilowatts, the power is the same, but more kilowatt-hours over the life of the project.
So, this is not actually going to change the footprint. Footprint is what it is. So, it's not a situation where we have to go to the planning board or anything, or no? Okay.
So, just so I'm clear, if this didn't happen, if you never wanted to move these, all these batteries into one area, a typical solar project includes the batteries already, right? That was already, when you, when you would design a solar project, you designed batteries with, with the panels. That's all part of the whole thing. And in this case, what you're doing is saying, "We're not going to put batteries on, over there. We're just going to keep them all in one spot." Is that really what we're saying?
Essentially, a solar plus storage project would have the batteries behind the same inverter as the, as the solar modules, right? So, the solar modules are one input into the inverter, the batteries are another input into the inverter, and AC going out to the grid is the output. In this instance, we're going to have the solar only going to the inverters and then take the battery storage and putting it up towards the substation, again, because taking it away from behind, behind the inverter wall for the, for the solar modules, we now have the flexibility to charge from the grid rather than only charging from the solar. You wouldn't be able to charge from the grid in that other aspect.
Right, but I guess what I'm asking then is if, there's going to be, there would have been batteries up there.
Correct.
Is that what you're saying? So, there would have been batteries up there if we, if you weren't going to do it this way, the batteries were already in the plans, and that was already going to be all part of that?
Correct.
Okay.
But this way is a more efficient system?
It's more efficient and, and more beneficial to the grid in general.
And I can show you on some of the drawings where, when you look very clearly on the drawings, you see all the different locations. We cut that in half, and even with us cutting it in half, we still have plenty of square footage to introduce the batteries there. And I just felt that we're better off putting it at the substation location, because you've got two big transformers up there too, and all our heavy equipment and everything. Then you can send you a drone video, or you can come visit the site, and you see exactly the area where they were going to put solar panels around the substation where the batteries show on the actual electrical drawings.
Okay. It, it just sounds like what you're saying, though. Tell me if I'm wrong. It sounds like what you're saying is if we said no, then you were going to have, you'd have batteries on.
You would have two, you would have two 20-foot containers at every transform.
Right.
That's, that's option one, is just putting them in there at just 7,000. We looked at it as a technical way to design it, and it makes more sense to put it into the substation. The ones I put into the substation, the way they connect it, the electrical wires, the time the electrical drones at the town has it, that's where we collect it, it's different. And I'm concerned that somebody's going to say that we built another project where Matt can read the accident.
Okay.
So, if I leave them where they are, we're, we're good. Where I'm putting them is actually better and probably be a better layout for the site, either, either spot they can work in. I was just concerned with everybody watching the project, and the project's going online this year, the storage, talking about fire truck, we've got a, we've got a dump truck that's eight months behind schedule from Mac that doesn't have fires on it. So, everything's behind, so the batteries will fall in in probably 2022, 2023. It's in all the studies right now, but we can't even buy them today on the project. So, everything's wired for, so we can put them in either place. I was just trying to put them in one location that I thought was more conducive to the site.
So, just to jump on that, so, just to show, the batteries were on the original electrical set that was submitted for permits. So, it's just, we're talking about the location of where we're going to place them on the site.
Mr. President?
Yes, please.
A little clarification for me. So, the consolidation of all these batteries are going to go GDIM1 location?
It will be on GIM1, but separate with a second, separate act treaty, just the battery.
But on one?
On one.
Maybe a little can help educate me here. Sound like you were explaining a containment dike when you were talking about where all the batteries, going to be a containment dike for anything that should leak past the outer shell of the battery?
So, the battery, I need to talk about.
Similar to what we do for transformers?
Okay.
So, it's, it's, you won't see anything above grade, but the area around the transformer, or in this case, be the battery module. And the only liquids in these battery, battery modules are cooling liquids. There's no dangerous chemicals. It's ethylene glycol for the coolant system. But if any of that liquid does leak, there's containment around it to capture that liquid so it doesn't go into any runoff.
Okay, I just want to make sure on the containment area, that sometimes with heavy rain, precipitation, snow, I've seen containment areas get, get one to two inches of water on the bottom of it. So, you're going to maintain that should there ever be a leak from the batteries that won't go over the edge or mingle?
It does need to be maintained, but this product that's, I forget the company that, we can give you a cut sheet on the product. Supposedly, it weeps out the rainwater and then holds back the glycol solution or oils.
Okay.
The other thing that's important to realize that the containment that I'm talking about is just open above the secondary safety. So, the actual container itself.
And the battery.
Is like all, which is in front of your school and your heating system and everything. So, that material's already contained with the 20-foot container, which is 1.3 megawatts of battery storage in that container. So, you don't need the additional. But we're looking at it in the location, I said, why don't we put a curb into the transformer, exactly what we were doing with the transformer? So, if there was a heavy rainstorm and the batteries out of it, you know, we have plenty of time to, you know, do, remember, it's just a safety feature that has a second fire exit out of the building. But you really don't need these, these batteries sit on, on sonnets above the grade. You really don't need to contain them separately because the manufacturer itself contains everything that's inside the container. I was just putting it in as, in being in one area, it's very easy to set up the same type of facility, and that's what we were planning at all.
Thank you.
So, what we think of batteries, like a car battery, there's battery acid, and that, so that doesn't, that's not the case with these Tesla batteries?
Different kind of batteries.
Yeah, it's a different kind of battery. So, it's lithium, nickel, magnesium, magnesium, cobalt oxide batteries, or that's the Tesla's proprietary, but that's what they base it, the chemistry they base it on. But again, like I said, this project could be a couple of years out, and battery technology advances almost quarterly, so it could be a different chemistry by the time the project actually gets built. So, what we're really talking about is can that battery be placed there, not the technology that'll be placed there.
You put these batteries, like me, I have solar on my house. I could put one of these batteries to storage. It would be in my garage. It would go in my garage. It's small in a file cabinet.
It's actually the exact same thing. So, if you buy a Tesla Powerwall, it's the exact same battery, just more of it.
But like they said, this stuff is advancing so fast. Panels are advancing and getting more efficient, more effective as we speak. In the three months' time I went from design to building mine, I lost one panel because they got that much more efficient. And I only have 21 panels on my house, and I haven't paid an electric bill in five years. Now, you're going online, you're going online before the end of the year. How many houses will it's going to power?
Just the site, you have that. I can tell you that.
Throw it off my head, Mark.
I can tell you that our global portfolio is 33,000 homes annually. I'd say we doubled to the probably 15.
Probably 15 or so.
15,000 homes.
On this, on this one, on this one site.
The other thing that's coming in, which is going to bring to the town, this is, this is a future of energy in our country. National Grid has a program right now. So, let's say your high school, I can take one parking spot, this is the exact same battery there, and put it in a program and pay you $20,000 a year for a battery sitting on your site. And then I charge, and National Grid discharges once a year for five years. So, what's happening now is with all the power plants going down, it was just in the paper today, upstate New York is in the big battery facility. So, National Grid in ISO, in fact, are encouraging schools and heavy users that have over a megawatt of energy to put the battery there for five years. And what that's going to do is that's going to, they're just going to draw the energy. So, they actually charge the battery for free during the day. The grid's power coming in because they have so much energy. Charge it, and then at nighttime, when the peak comes up, they discharge it. So, you'll be seeing those coming out. People will be soliciting the town and everybody for them. The problem again there is something that they want out by the spring of that year. I need 24 months to get it, you know what I mean, to let that, again, supply chain.
That's, that's a downfall to solar. It only works during the day. At night, you have to draw it back from the grid unless you have storage. Follow-up question, Mr. President?
Please, go ahead.
Batteries have made tremendous progress. Efficiency-wise, I'm going to assume they're going to be somewhere in the high 90s to charge. After how many discharge and charge, and when does it drop to say 89, 80?
So, the life expectancy of the battery modules themselves, not the converters that are in them.
Yep.
Are about 15 years. I believe it's about 3,800 cycles. So, that's full up-down charge cycles. I'd confirm that is what I believe it is.
Okay. And at some point, though, the amount of efficiency, the percentage of recharge is going to deteriorate?
It does, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Based on your depth of discharge.
Yep.
In these units who are made to, just like repower and equipment, as, as the battery gets older, you can, as you have issues with certain components, they can slide out, and you can take them out and reinstall components that you might be budgeting to hold up.
Okay.
Steve actually brought up a great point that I was speaking about earlier, too. At the end of the 15 years, Tesla, as part of the agreement when you're working with them, actually takes the battery modules back, so it's a recycling program, breaks them down into whatever finite elements that they are, and repackage them to go back out into the field. So, there's no batteries going into the landfill at the end of the, at the end of life.
You're bringing up a good point, because I believe we put very substantial. You're bringing up a good point because I believe we put a very substantial cash bond portion, it was a 75% cash and the rest was bond. I, I'm not sure now.
It ended up being all cash.
Did it end up all cash? Yeah, forgive my memory too.
1.2 million of all cash.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that we have enough in there to cover the batteries down the road.
When we gave the numbers to the county and everything, we looked at it and when we passed the payment back, we've always expected to have the same amount of coal as we would move after. And, um, and the NICE has said again, instead of moving 2,400 where it is and 24 transformers and all that, we're already at half of that. So just, and, and then again, then like you say on the panels, so, you know, we, I can't say it's a, there are maybe eight or 16 left on panels on those sites, um, that are out there. So as this, the site gets comfortable and then there's actually less, we're going to take off the site in the future.
So just to recap, my apologies that the documents didn't reach you in time, but, and I'll certainly work with the solicitor prior to the next meeting, but really all I did is take the prior tax stabilization agreement, redline it to change solar to battery, to lop off the provisions that just didn't make sense because it's battery and otherwise, you know, we didn't reinvent the wheel. It's pretty much.
We would have had to, uh, I wouldn't have called the vote on it anyway. I would have given everybody an opportunity to study it, give the solicitor an opportunity to go over it. And I would have, uh, made the same motion that we decide that at the next meeting or the meeting after that to, to vote on this.
Absolutely.
So, um, I'm not going to take, make a, we're not going to vote on this right now, but I would like that information if you can get it to us so we can distribute it and study it, have the solicitor and the, and the administrator go over it and then we'll, we'll vote on it.
Absolutely, we'll do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Now we can go back to the top. If anybody, unless anybody you want to move on?
Before you gentlemen leave, do we have the extra copies? Cause I, I didn't receive one. Hang on, if we've got one, you won't have to.
What do you want to set up? The tax stabilization agreement?
Yeah. Everything that was just.
I only have one, but.
I would like a complete setup. Attorney Prossini, if you want to deliver tomorrow, that'd be great. Is that an extra one? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
All right. Since we've been moving, jumping around, why don't, why stop now? We're going to move down to old business E. Old business E. If everybody can, uh, on the agenda, discussion by council voter, other action on sidewalk issue on North Smithfield Road.
Smithfield Road.
I'm sorry. What did I put? Oh, I said, oh, Smith, Smithfield Road. Thank you. So I'm getting a little feedback. Do you hear that? Okay.
No. Mr. President, can you, can you ask those gentlemen to step off? Cause I can.
Yep. If you gentlemen could just step outside right now? Thank you. So the vice president asked us to be on, put on the agenda because Mr. Gillette wanted an opportunity to respond to the issue going on and, for the parking issue going on on Smithfield Road. So, uh, we're going to have you, give you your opportunity. However, I just want to make it clear to everybody that this isn't, we're not, we're not going to vote on anything. This isn't a, uh, we're not, this isn't a, we're not going to judge anything. This isn't a panel to make a decision, render a decision on anything. We're just going to give you your opportunity that you asked for, which is fair. And then we're going to, uh, Ms. O'Hara would like to speak, but we're just going to keep this nice, nice, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Good evening.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Bob Gillette. I live at 49 Orchard Street. I'm here with my sister Gail Naradoe, who resides at my childhood home at 521 Smithfield Road. I know when you said old, you referred, you were looking at me, so I, probably a mistake. First of all, we're disheartened by what we saw and observed with Mrs. O'Hara's statements on August 16th in the town council meeting agenda, discussion vote and other action on replacement of unsafe sidewalks on Union Square to Park Ave. But, but no one from the town had the decency to reach out to the abuddies as to who this in, people on the agenda would impact, namely my family. I would expect better from my townspeople and at least our opportunity to discuss the history. I'd like to discuss the afternoon that a policeman knocked at my door, at my sister's door with the current situation going on in my family. You can understand a police officer coming to the door, does put your heart at the bottom. I wear a uniform, doesn't know if it's an informant of maybe something happening to me. And it was to her surprise after, I don't want to say your age, 60-something years of living there, that we could no longer park in the front of the house, that we were occupying a breakdown lane. And that we had to move, that a call was made to the TA and the TA called the lieutenant on duty. Nothing against the police, they're doing their due diligence. Never in 62 years that my family has lived there, were we ever told we could not park there and that it was referred to as a breakdown lane. However, Mrs. O'Hara has had an issue with us parking in front of my parents' house and now sister's house for more than 30 years. And I'll give the history. Mrs. O'Hara stated that my family removed sidewalk and curving is absolutely untrue as the pictures reflect. There was never sidewalk or curving in 62 years of my family living there. Please refer to the pictures in your docket, in your packet. My father often argued, going back to Arthur Denomi, the former town administrator and the administrator's following, who was responsible for it because the conditions were deplorable in front of the house. And he would be told that it's the state's and the, he'd contact people at the state and the state would tell him it's the town's responsibility. My father then took it upon himself through friends and contacts, Bergerson Asphalting, for anybody that was old enough to remember them on, uh, Cato Street in One Socket, used to come up being friends with my fathers in hot patch, the areas that had washed out due to snow and storm erosion, rain, et cetera, plowing. And while we're talking about plowing, understand that that's a state highway. And anybody who lived there knows that three state plows come three abreast, one taking the middle, one taking the lane and one taking the other. Now, as a kid, walking home from Bushy School in Queen Amata's, we were made to walk on those snowbanks that were often two to three feet high. There wasn't a concern about sidewalks back then. When my sister took over the property, my father took a fall getting out of his car, split his head open and was in the lane to travel to which no one stopped. My sister and my brother-in-law, we took it upon themselves, going through all the proper channels within the town and state to pave the front of our house and the former neighbor's Riendo paid for their half, which is the duplex that Mrs. O'Hara refers to. There were no curbstones. There were no sidewalks, ever. I shoveled, I snowbowed. There were none. The grade of my brother-in-law's driveway now was taken down because of years of erosion. If you look to the picture of the driveway, you can see the striations from the vehicles when we'd pull in or out, bottoming out. So my brother-in-law took the grade down to make it easier to back in and out. That was the only alteration. DigSafe was called, utilities were called, building permits were, were spoke building inspectors and everybody who needed to be there was there. It was done by brand construction and asphalt. Uh, let me see, just. Clearly the pictures that we presented show that there's no sidewalks. We'd have more pictures for you dating back to 1959 when my parents bought the house from the Lambits. The DePaddos originally built it. They owned the second house on Summit Ave, the brick house. They built the house, they lived in it while they were building the brick house, sold it to the Lambits and subsequently sold it to my parents. We have pictures of my father when he discharged from the service, standing in front with two of my sisters, young sisters in front. And you can clearly see that there were no curvings or sidewalks. But with my mother in Miriam Hospital right now, in her latter stages of life, we weren't going through photo albums in her residence. We had more important things to deal with. However, if need be, I will present those. The town adopted RIO DOT standards for roads. If you have curbstones, Mr. Zalinski stated, you're supposed to have a six-inch reveal. But what happened over this section of Smithfield Road that Mrs. O'Hara is speaking of, that they, that we paved over the curb. Again, this is false. There was no curving. And in fact, if you go up the road towards Summit and White Parkway, you'll see the original field stones that are what are described as the curbing. In fact, two other families paved in front of their road. The Dahlbeck, the Dahl, I'm sorry, the Dahltes, which are on the corner of Glenn and Smithfield Road, they always maintain in front of their property in the former Tenza Studios, they repaved that area. And they had curbing done when the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza was redone and went in. Both Mrs. O'Hara and Mr. Zalinski spoke of illegal parking and no parking signs on Smithfield Road and that we were disregarding the no parking sign posted. Again, you can see in the pictures that the no parking starts at our neighbor's driveway beyond our property at 531 Smithfield Road, close to Summit Ave, and that the no parking points from their driveway up towards Summit. Additionally, state law does not exist that you cannot, the state law does exist, excuse me, that you cannot back out onto a state highway. Our neighbors have a turnaround in their driveway. The parcel land my parents purchased 62 years ago did not have that ability due to the septic or cesspool footprint in the backyard. We repaired and paved it to use, to safely and usefully pull in, pull up, back in and safely pull out, as well as as we got older and more of us were driving, to have a car, to be able to park a third car there, with still maintaining an area of travel for pedestrians. And by the way, if you look at the sidewalks' conditions going up, my parents, the old Dahlte property and the old Tenza property are probably the safest parts of the sidewalks on that street. Mrs. O'Hara also stated, you cannot see when you're trying to exit Summit Ave to go onto Smithfield Road because parked, cars are parked in front of my sister's home, causing a visual obstruction. Has any one of you tested this statement? We did. You cannot see the front of my sister's house, let alone any cars in front of the house due to the elevated yards at our neighbor's homes and the curve in the road. We would be happy to meet with anybody and test this theory. We were wondering, if you remember a conversation, Ms. O'Hara, we were wondering if you remember a conversation with previous town administrator Kenny Bianchi some 20 years ago, when you brought this concern and Kenny suggested to making Summit Ave a one-way. Amazingly, this issue was dropped. This issue was dropped. Mr. Bianchi was my parents' neighbor. He lived in the old Monsor property at 531 Smithfield Road. This was dropped. But I suggest for the safety of the people on Summit, as Mrs. O'Hara states, that you entertain making Summit a one-way, as I've experienced many accidents of people pulling out, because it is a blind spot with the elevated yards and the bend in the road and the increased speed. Maybe something that the town council should consider. In closing, Mrs. O'Hara, since you've never come and spoken to my parents, my sister, my brother-in-law about any of the concerns as a neighbor, as a neighbor or an elected official, we are feeling that this is more personal in nature. It has been brought to our attention by numerous neighbors, friends and family, that you stop them and speak to them of the deteriorating sidewalks, but specifically about the parking in front of the two houses mentioned. At the town council meeting August 16th, when Mr. Pendergast was offering his sidewalk solutions and a need for planning, you cut him off and asked, but what about those two houses? So I'm wondering, Mr. Town Administrator and fellow council members, do you see our concern? We feel that we are being singled out because, because it seems over the past 30 years, it has been that way. It is our parking and it never was a sidewalk issue. Mrs. O'Hara, do you recall the failed petitions on the matter of pass regarding parking, not sidewalks, and the statements you made? Now that Mr. Gillette is dead, we can pursue this. Or how about when you, when you once again stopped our neighbors who were walking their dog on the sidewalk? By the way, you, you can, excuse me, by the way, is completely deteriorated. Do you ask if the cars in front of our house bothered them? No, you don't, you don't ask about the sidewalks, you asked about the cars in front of our house. Family members that you didn't know. We're here to talk to us, answer questions you may have. This Mr. Gillette is still alive. You're not going to take my father's name and say he did something wrong. Mr. Vatney mentioned in August 16th meeting, that happens in a lot of other places in town where there are sidewalks. It's happening in my neighborhood. It's happening all over. This was never an issue. We parked there for 62 years. There was never a sidewalk. I don't know how clearly, more clearly we'd show. You can speak with Ronnie Carter, who owned One Socket Auto Body. You can talk, you can speak with the Felicio family who owned the Gulf. They had an agreement with the Bianquis, the Rendos and my parents during business hours, customers' cars due to the overflow would be parked in front of the house because it was a parking space. We feel that it's pre-existing non-conforming. We're not opposed to sidewalks, but we're opposed to, at the way this went about, saying that we did something illegal or immoral, because that's not my father and that's definitely not my brother-in-law or sister. And I will not stand for that, never. Leave my family out of this. Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby. Uh, I think it would, it's only, Ms. O'Hara, do you want to respond?
Absolutely.
But I'm, I'm just going to stress again.
No, no, no. I'm going to speak to my mom. Bob, if you could be a piece on the last, you know. First of all, you haven't seen me walk on that street for a long time. Because my Patrick. Can you hear me? I have a.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. My Patrick, um, about, I'd say 2012, for a while couldn't drive. And one morning I was at school, he wanted to go to Coffee and Cream evidently. He, he was walking down and, and it was, you know how bad that sidewalk is. And when I got home from school, I guess he fell down, someone helped him back to the house. He was all scraped up. So after that, I said, you can't do it. During that time and before that time, I was not on the council and I did try to correct the sidewalk. I did go to the meetings, but to no avail. What the former town bond, et cetera, uh, they said it was going to be done. And then in November of, uh, I believe, uh, 98, around that, uh, they said it was too late in, in the year. And it was all three roads at the time. Too late in the year, they'd do it in the spring. And when that meeting came in the spring, and I was at that meeting, they said, well, they got up, the head of the town bond, and it wasn't you, Mr. Pendergast, uh, your predecessor, and, and said, uh, we're going to do the highway. I said, what do you mean the highway? Supposed to look into the highway because that should be taken by, by the state. And the only reason why, my street, because it cut the trees and they had to replace it. Uh, first of all, I, I, I never knew, I was surprised that the police were going over to your place and threatening you with a ticket. I assume you say, listen, you know, this is, this is a, um, a setback and, uh, you, you can't park there or you have to park for, you know, in your driveway because now you would have like four cars that you can't fit. But never. Bobby, you were born in that house.
That's correct.
And I was reared in that neighborhood. When you moved in the house, wasn't it 1961 that your dad bought that house?
61 or 62.
It was 61. I was in hot.
Oh, I'm sorry, 59.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was still, it was 61, my mistake. I was, well, just about in high school, my sister was graduating and we all, everybody up there, you mentioned all the people, the Monsors, you know, Scotty bought the Gray House after that, the Vickys. We could go on and on, all the people. But at that time, I walked that. And actually, I was reared because my grandmother lived where the beef barn was and I was on Fabian Street, you know, my, uh, my brother and the Vickys and all of that. There was not that parking. The two places that you talked to, the Autobahn Place and across the street, uh, they started out at Seagulls and the place next to you was your Auto Fair. out at Segals, and the place next to you was Auto Fair, then it was Sheer Panes, because my brother tried to talk to my father, and so sports car, that, and what, either, and then they moved on the highway. That was never, there was never any concourse there, any sidewalk at all. And I think some Riandos lived in that White House at one time, and there was never anything in front of their house either. Where it began was when your walkways coming up, and the pictures show that kind of, well, I call it a berm or whatever, that was there. But we both know, over the years, when they put in sewers, then the road, they put in the water in nineteen thirty-nine. Then they came through the neighborhood, and were through a grant from WPA, which we all had on our sidewalks, and they were good sidewalks back then, okay? And then a second time, when we, that was the water, and then when the sewers came in, the tar came up again. And if you look at the road, on North Smithfield side, the breakdown lane is very small. The center of that road favors, is closer to North Smithfield, so on One Socket side, you have same amount of road, but a much bigger breakdown lane where people park, the Vickys, where they had parties, they parked there. The Yen houses, they had their driveways there. When your parents first moved in, it was just your mother's car, am I correct, and dad's car?
Correct.
Okay? And when you look at a house, but even houses on White Parkway, when they first moved in, most people had two cars.
But the point is, Mrs. O'Hara, aside from grass that washed out in front of my parents' house, and if you look at the Fortin property, you see the grass footprint where the fence separates my sister's property and my prop, my parents' former property, there has been no alteration to the front, other than that grass being removed from in front of the front lawn. And that was removed before they bought it, because I removed it, because it was all washed out, and it was undermining what Bergersons had done. There was never any alteration to that. Now, as to the culvert, if you look at the corner of the culvert of your pictures, as all is ours, that's state plows.
Oh, absolutely, it takes the top out. If you look at it, it takes it all out.
Their pictures come off the wall when that third plow hits it. There is, and it's a ramp, when we were kids, we used it to jump bikes. But my family did nothing but maintain that, and always utilized it to park, going back to nineteen fifty-nine. If my Uncle Henry was alive, he'd get up here, because he used to bring the patch from the old Lincoln plant.
Well, all I can say, I don't remember all those cars being on that driveway. I was there since nineteen, well, I was about six afterwards, walking up the Miners and all. We're talking early fifties, before you bought the house. We walked on that street, there were never cars parked in front of those houses way back then.
I can't-
All night long, all day, you know, early in the morning, that when you have to walk, you walk in the breakdown lane.
And while you're speaking of walking, if, we spoke about the young lady in the wheelchair that my sister graduated from high school with.
That's right.
With the placement of those signs that the state put-
Ridiculous.
Even if those sidewalks were navigable, there is no way someone could get down those sidewalks in a wheelchair. And I don't argue that the sidewalks are deplorable, because they're the same from when I was a kid. They've never been replaced, they're fieldstones. I'm concerned about the front of my parents' house and my neighbors', and the status of what it was and what it is. It's never been a sidewalk. I shoveled it, I plowed it, I repaired it.
And I walked on it.
And I, and I walked it, and I took dumps on the sidewalks with my bike.
But I was able to walk on it.
Well, when things aren't maintained, things deteriorate. That's, up the road isn't our concern. My concern is five twenty-one Smithfield Road, and the, and the allegation that we altered a curb, we didn't. There was never one there.
Can I jump in? I'm sorry, I don't want to cut anyone off, but the reason this was on the agenda is because if anyone does go out there and, and stand in that area for a period of time on any day, I was, I went out there a few times, I met with Bob and also other times, to see what kind of traffic. The conditions, the speed is, is crazy. So maybe this is, this is an issue that maybe was brought up, not in the most favorable way, but maybe we can make something a lot more positive come of this, because the speed going by, you can't, the cars are constant, you, you can't even back out, even if you tried, which now we know is a state law, you can't back out on the street. But you, you basically, these cars, these houses are basically taking their lives in their hands, pulling out of their street. The amount of traffic that goes by never stops, and you can't go out, I pulled out, tried to pull out of Summit, you cannot see down Summit. So I totally, I, I know, last time I was on council, we did a one-way on Lappery, because that was a dangerous area, too. And I would be happy to ask the police department to do a traffic study, and maybe that is the best option, because someone is going to get killed pulling out of, out of a Summit, because you can't see-
Most people don't even, we can't, you know, I want to get a popcorn, you know, we wave, even to get out of White Parkway right now.
But at least White Parkway, it's a flatter area-
Absolutely.
And you can see more distance each way, but Summit, you, you've got the corner, you've got people, they're, they're coming at a good rate of speed, because they're coming from the traffic light up the hill. So I would ask that maybe the council, that we start some sort of work on this and have the police department look at it, do a traffic study, see if it's something that we would be able to maybe start a one-way road, have the DOT come out and look at, at this breakdown lane, see if it's something that they can maybe tear it up and, and fix it, so that from the corner of the, the Autopots place up to the corner of Summit, clear that up, so there is an area for cars to pull off, you know, sometime, I would imagine even pulling into your yard, it's dangerous, you would need an area to, to pull off into. So I think there's a lot of issues going on here, and, and I understand-
But if, Bob, if, Bobby, I've known you so long, I think we, with Pat's sake, and when your sister moved in with, with Wayne, it was wonderful, they were getting older. If we can work together, maybe we both have a lot in our place, I'm just concerned, because Pat almost, and I have a torn meniscus, trying to go down to the, that little mini-mot- No, but it was on the sidewalk.
Yeah, but not in front, because ours is the, ours is probably one of the best making.
That, when I got to the square, because the cars were there, it was at nothing. The cars were parked on the sidewalk, I had to go, and then I, I was in, in the road, so I turned around and said, "I can't go down there." So whatever it is, Bob, let's start from here, work together, because your father taught me how to make a good cake, because he was a baker also.
If, if the sidewalk were to go in front, it would be dangerous for us to be able to pull in, because we'd have to stop the impeding traffic coming up and then back in.
Then people can walk-
Now, I used to do it with my brother-in-law Wayne's truck, and a lot of times it was close the eyes, close your eyes and hit the gas. We need that front to be able to safely back in, to apply by state law. My father, one day, you know, in his dotage, he pulled in, and pulled in because he had to use the bathroom, and when he was going back out to run some errands, he ended up getting rear-ended. Person rear-ended him was inebriated, but because my father backed out that day-
Stayed away.
He was at fault, and there was nothing, nothing the town could do or the state. So I, I proffer that to you as leaders, to take that into consideration, whether it be pre-existing non-conforming, these are the facts of the matter, if you need more pictures to nineteen fifty-nine, you'll have them. But right now, we're dealing with my mom and those final stages. And I, to piggyback on Ms. Al's, I've been there at rush hour, and I would suggest the police department not stage there, but put a camera, not one of the radar things, put a camera, because now they're coming down from Darling Village, three abreast, going towards Beef Barn. They've created three lanes, because they want to take the, they want to take the left, and they're overtaking the center into the oncoming lane, to be able to beat the light to go down Greenville Road. It, it's a nightmare, and they're up against the curb, going towards Providence Street, and the middle lane is what it is.
And then I just wanted to just say one more thing, too. The other, the other issue that I would like to try to address is crosswalk at White Parkway to get across, but also have it so that there's a light, so when someone is crossing, that it is a traffic light, because the traffic and the speed is, is definitely an issue, and someone's going to get killed, whether it be in a car or a pedestrian, and I think those are two issues. And I, I would ask the council to, you know, move forward and have a traffic study done, so we can try and get some sort of resolution in this area, because it definitely needs to be done, it's an accident waiting to happen.
I, I agree with, with Ms. Al's about the one-way on Summit. I was telling Mrs. O'Hara earlier tonight-
Absolutely, I wouldn't, I always-
Mrs. O'Hara, please, I didn't interrupt you when you were talking, please. I, I agree that we should investigate going with the one-way street, and, and I was telling Mrs. O'Hara, for thirty-two years or longer, I've been walking on that street. It's never changed. Nothing has changed on that street in thirty-two years, the One Socket side or the North Smithfield side, and the only place is a curb, is further up at Glenn Ave., in front of that guy's house, because he put it in.
Old Dahlbeck Pharmacy, the, the-
And, and you have, you have curbstones that are actually sandstones, fieldstones that are put in, that was the curbstone, that you can see them sticking out. And so my comment about the sidewalks, it had nothing to do with your cars, it was just in general that out there, we have people parking on sidewalks all over the place, and, and it's not enforced, that's the issue. But we do have an ordinance that says there's no parking from Union Square to-
To-
To the thing, and, and that's just an ordinance, and that's why there's no big breakdown lane, because there's an ordinance that says there's no parking on that side. But I agree with you, and, and maybe we got to talk to the state and get them to put in the flashing lights like they have on Main Street, where you want to cross and crosswalk, you push the button, the lights flash to alert you that they're there. Go by there on a Sunday morning, now they're playing team football over there, oh, what a fiasco that is. I walked there, I walked that road to go to the bank, I walked that road to go to the post office, I walked there every two weeks to pick up my packet. I walked back on the One Socket side, because the sidewalk's better, I'll be honest with you. And, and you know, you got the businesses there, but yeah, it's something that we need to investigate, but nothing has changed on that street in over thirty-two years. That's the long I've been walking.
Longer than that, I'm fifty, I'm fifty-two, and-
I've only been walking there for thirty-two years.
We ran deep on White Parkway, and it was that way back then, if anything, it's gotten worse, but I just can't stress, they were never-
Like you say, let's take something and try to make something good out of it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I?
Please.
Bob, so the second time this evening, where, not this evening, it's the second time I've heard where the town administrator called the police department to go out and issue tickets, nothing can be further from the truth. I called the chief, I said, "Chief, I get a little forgetful, did I talk to any of you?" Said, "Nope, they were watching it on YouTube, they took the initiative to go out and speak to them." I also said that to the neighbor, and that was the first time I heard it, and it kind of upset me, because I'm not going to send the police out, I may, as a public safety director, I can, but I didn't send them out there to issue tickets, I want that on the record.
Sir, as someone that's one of, a retired police officer and now deputy sheriff of the state, we've all been sent out on tasks that we knew were questionable, or that it had politics behind it, I take no offense to it, but understand that this was a blind spot for my, a blind shot for my family, to see it in the press and get a knock on the door from a police officer, rather than, in past practice, that if there's something affecting the town, land of butters, notices sent out to them, like, "Hey, we're going to be talking about curbs, sidewalks in front of your house, give us the opportunity to at least not show up," but none of that was ever done, and to get a knock on the door.
I would like to reiterate, I did not ask-
No, I know, and I know you spoke with my sister, and we know, and again, I get it, I've been on that side, so I get it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby.
So can I make a motion that we are going to, like, to make a motion that we contact the Department of, Rhode Island Department of Transportation to review the area from the Autopots up to Summit, Summit Ave., is it Ave.?
Summit Ave., absolutely, because there's a Summit Street a block over North Socket.
I don't know why they do that, but-
So to review that, that parcel there, and to see if we can get that reconstructed and have some sort of area that has, whether you want to call it a breakdown lane, for residents to come in and out of their yards, and also if we can ask the police to do a traffic study, so we could potentially go forward with moving Summit into a one-way, and also the traffic light, the traffic light issue at the crosswalk of White Parkway.
Second.
It's a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, we actually did something very similar, we made Old Smithfield Road a one-way between certain hours, so it wasn't, it wasn't even, it's very doable.
And it's safer, I mean, you know, it's-
We've done it on Lappery Road, like you were saying, Lappery Road was done that way, because same issue, people were trying to pull out on Lappery Road, they were coming up the hill and over the bridge on the corner, and you just couldn't see people.
Yeah.
And so we created a one-way into that street, and you come out on Hillview, where there's a lot better line of vision, not a much better, but a better.
I, I can say that when I lived on Robin Way, I avoided Summit, and I know that most residents on Summit would come down Summit-
When you lived on White Parkway, you mean?
Oh, White Parkway, excuse me, yeah, that's my third street, yeah, White Parkway. Most residents would go onto White Parkway to avoid it, because it is suicide. As we know, the cars are coming down the hill, trying to make the light, they don't, they don't decelerate coming up, and it's very difficult to post a police car there, because they'll get rear-ended. So, yeah, it's a very difficult location.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, now that we're all over the place, so we're going to go back to the top, unless anybody has any other suggestions that they want to-
Just take care of the people that are here.
Okay, well, that's at the top, right, all right, yeah, you're right, all right, so why stop now, right, so where are we?
Old Business A.
Old Business A. Mr. Nelson, thank you for your patience. Discussion by council, vote on the action, and update of municipal building review task force.
Good evening, and we can see me in person, instead of Zoom. We have in front of you invoice number four-four-two-four-nine from Tekton Architects for fifty-six-hundred dollars, which was reviewed by the task force August thirty-first, with the recommendation that it be approved.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve invoice number four-four-two-four-nine dated August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one from Tekton Architects, in amount of fifty-six-hundred dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Nelson, do you have any updates for us?
No, just a reminder that we have the workshop next Monday at six forty-five.
Six forty-five.
And that, I get the date wrong, that's the twenty-seventh.
We're going to do it here, or we're going to do it at the police station?
Here.
Here, okay.
They're going to have a PowerPoint and a presentation to do, so we'll have them set it up.
Great, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are you ready for anything? Are you ready for anything? Okay.
I'm just here for support.
Okay. Discussion by council, vote on the action, and update of Hallowell Review Committee. Mr. Corvo, what do you have for us?
All right, so we met last Thursday, we, we discussed Pumpkin Fest, we assigned different blocks of times for two or three of us to man the Pumpkin Fest tent. We had a pretty good turnout, I'll have Jeff talk about it here in just a second, after I recap our, our meeting. During the meeting last Thursday, we discussed five concepts, which were also presented at Pumpkin Fest, finding five concepts that gave a basic layout of the property, highlighting any type of slope, any type of wetlands or water, so that as people came by, they were able to see exactly where, where things lied. And as far as the buildings, we have a couple different options, but again, that was presented to us during the last Hallowell meetings, five concepts for that. We also discussed removing the market analysis portion of the Weston and Sampson contract. We just felt as a, as a committee, based on the purview of, of what that entailed, we felt as though that could be an area where we didn't necessarily need, based on certain circumstances that we discussed. And I believe, Jeff, remind me if I'm correct, is that something that needs to be approved by, by town council? Removing the market analysis portion of the Weston and Sampson contract?
I think we can just move forward and say that they're not going to do it, and then we just don't pay for it.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. We've awarded a contract to them in a full dollar amount, not a piecemeal thing.
I understand, but there's a portion of the contract that we feel isn't necessary now. So then likely it's in eight thousand five hundred fifty-dollar value that can be credited back to the town. They haven't performed the service. So they also haven't signed on their consultant that would have performed the service already. So if the action needs to be from the town council that we have to amend that contract, then that would certainly be our recommendation from the committee. Or if it's, if we can just move forward and strike it from the contract and they just not perform the service, and then that's, we leave it at that, that's whatever the legality, legal action that we need to take.
Correct. And if that's something that needs to have further discussion as far as explaining why, I can certainly do that. We also started at least a dialogue as well as sample RFP in regards to the hazardous waste materials on the property in regards to removing them. And we also talked about seeking town council approval. We threw out a number of somewhere around approximately twenty-five thousand for that study. Is that correct?
The state law requires us to go out for requests for proposals if the amount's gonna be greater than twenty-five thousand dollars. We, it's our belief that the hazardous materials testing and documentation would likely be less than that threshold. So we would ask that we, I've been working with Cynthia, the finance director. I was gonna be sharing it with our town solicitor. But we also have been in contact with someone from the state purchasing department to get all the language and wording correct for putting together that request for proposals. So it's on my, just being in the architecture and engineering field, I felt that it was a service for the testing and the documentation that could be less than that twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's the avenue that we could take.
I'm not sure. We just approved an ordinance on what we need to do for bidding. And it's five thousand.
But I mean, you're talking about the pricing, because that might be a whole different topic.
If we can piggyback onto an MPA, that's a whole different issue.
And that's why, you know, I had proposed a draft RFP, shared it with Cynthia, and she has shared it with the state purchasing. So then that way, we're following the rules and regulations the way that we need to for this hazardous materials testing and documentation.
The last item that we discussed was asking for a request to have the Hallowell...
I don't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. They still have to have council approval to spend that kind of, spend money though, right? I mean, you just can't...
Yes, correct, yes.
So what we're doing is we're getting the RFQ prepared. We're essentially getting all ducks in a row. So then that way, we have the document, we can give that to you for approval to move forward.
To review discussing and/or approve.
Sorry, if I didn't make that clear. We're getting everything ready, so then all you guys have to say is go, and then that's it.
I got you, okay.
So that's why I'm gonna, you know, I've been working with Cynthia. We're gonna reach out, I'm gonna share it with the town solicitor, reaching out to the state purchasing officer to make sure that everything that we're doing right now, all you guys will have to do is just say go. I'm trying to do all the like...
I understand, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay. Like I was saying, then the last thing that we discussed was expanding the live YouTube feed for the Hallowell Review Committee. As we are winding down things with Weston and Sampson and that contract, we want to keep the momentum going with the project. And we felt as though, for several different reasons, and I think Jeff can speak to it on the turnout at Pumpkin Fest. But we are getting a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of traction from the residents on that. And we just felt as though if we keep it the way it normally is, which is, you know, you record the meetings and they usually show up a day, sometimes a day and a half later on YouTube, that might be counterproductive where if people want to know exactly what's going on more of a real time. And it also gives them the ability, you know, obviously to show up in person if they have a question. We just felt as though that would be something, given the size of the project it is and the interest that it would warrant, kind of piggybacking onto that YouTube live feed. And I'm not sure the protocol of that, but I don't know if town council needs to take a vote on that or if you want to put it off to the next meeting. But, you know, however, however, I guess, Dave, would we have to take a vote to amend adding the Hallowell Review Committee meetings to live YouTube?
You would, but you can do a basic part of the agenda right there.
Correct, correct. Okay, okay. Trying to think what else. I think that's it. Jeff, if you could just speak to Pumpkin Fest. Unfortunately, I had an engagement come up somewhat unexpected on Saturday. So unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend Pumpkin Fest and assist. So I'm asking Jeff to speak.
Yeah, so on Saturday, the majority of the committee was present at Pumpkin Fest. We had a really good turnout. What was very nice is that there was not a negative word said. There was a lot of positive feedback. There was a lot of interest in the project. We kind of had a mini charrette with the, continuing with the sticky dots that we had done originally back a couple of months ago. We had just about a hundred people vote for the various five concepts. Concept number five was the lead concept that had about forty votes. In addition to that, we also had poster board and index cards for people to write their preferred concepts. If they also liked, you know, one part of one concept and then wanted to add it to a different concept, they had the ability to write that as well. So we had about twenty-five interactions on that front. So yeah, it was good to be out and speak with everybody. There's a lot of enthusiasm, as Steve said. And we're just, you know, there was a good amount of excitement and they weren't just there for the candy either. So that was all, with some of the teenagers coming up, it was a good way to incentivize them to put their vote on and trade off a vote for a lollipop. So worked out well.
One last thing I just want to add. So I did reach out to Weston and Sampson today. And they are going to be on the agenda for the next town council meeting along with... I did put in a request to have Caroline bring the engineering team. So she did reply back saying that the team would be here at the next Hallowell meeting. So at that point, I can only assume that they will share all of the concepts with everybody here and give you an opportunity to answer any, have any questions answered that you have.
Is that a meeting with Weston and Sampson and the council? Is that supposed to be a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll make sure that it's a public hearing. I remember concept five vaguely. Can you describe it?
Concept five was the... Concept five was the single multi-story building that had a series of various courts, playground, a splash pad incorporated into it. And the singular building was entitled the Wellness Center. So that would be a combination of the senior center, youth activities, classrooms, rental space. So that sort of thing.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Steve. Thanks, Jeff. Okay. Let me get my bearings here. Now we're gonna go to the top. Roll call. Oh, not that far up, right? Okay. Discussion by council, vote on other action on payment of bills. Does anybody have any questions regarding the packet with the bills?
Mr. President.
Ms. House?
I want to recuse myself on this one because I am on the payment of bills for a purchase of an eternal light and candle for the nine-eleven ceremony. So I just want to recuse myself.
Okay. Does anybody else have any thing they want to, any questions regarding the bills? We have a motion to approve?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve from the general fund, three hundred and four thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and ninety-eight cents from the 2021-2022 budget and twenty-one thousand six hundred and forty-eight thousand seventy-two cents from the 2020-2021 budget. And the following electronic payments to the library of thirty-eight thousand four hundred ten dollars and seventy-five cents to the school department, one million seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents to the fire department, two hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-three cents to the inter-local trust, one hundred and forty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighteen cents on the USDA loan, ninety-one dash one-two, forty-six thousand ninety-four dollars. The USDA loan, ninety-one dash one-one, thirty-seven thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars for retirement account, ten thousand two hundred nine dollars and fifty-nine cents for bond payment to the Bank of New York, thirty-three thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars and seventy-six cents. And bond payment, US Bank, two hundred and ninety-four thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Total electronic payments of two million six hundred thirty thousand one hundred sixty dollars and seventy-eight cents for total payments of two million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-five cents.
Okay, that's a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Discussion by council, vote on other action on consent agenda. All items listed in this section are considered in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a councilor so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Are there any items that any councilor would like removed from the consent agenda at this time?
Mr. President, I'd like to remove town council minutes of September 7th, 2021.
September 7th, 2021, removed. Anybody else? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the remaining items in the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the following consent agenda, town council minutes of August 4th and August 16th of 2021, and communications from the annual control monthly report for August 2021, North Smithfield Police Department monthly report for August 2021, North Smithfield Municipal Court monthly report for August 2021, and North Smithfield Fire and Rescue monthly report for July and August of 2021.
That's a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Vadenay, did you want to discuss the...
Yeah, on September 7th, just one change, the last page, last item before we adjourn. Public Works Award of Bid, 2022 Ram 5500 Truck. We, I don't know why this thing keeps going around and around. It's a 2500 truck that we bought. And actually, the motion was to purchase a 2500. So I think we just need to change the heading on the 2022 Ram 2500 Truck from MHQ in that we purchased the 2022 Ram 2500 Truck.
We got that? Motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 It'd be a hell of a truck for that price though.
And discussion by council, vote on action on waiving of town fees for food trucks regarding annual scary night on October 23rd, 2021, organized by the North Smithfield Heritage Association. Ms. House?
I'm just coming before the council to ask that we waive all food truck fees for that night as we've done for other town events for the annual scary night on October 23rd.
Do you know which ones are coming? Any idea?
I don't.
Do you know how many were added?
Because we may have already waived the fees on some of them.
Well, no. Because you have, from what I'm, from the ordinance, you have to do it every event they're at. So they would have to pull fees for this one. So it's the Heritage Association that's really running this. And Richard Keen had asked that we just put it on the agenda to waive the fees. So they have to do it for each event.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Once they get a permit, they get a state permit that they need from the Department of Health.
Yeah.
And then they need to get a permit from the town, not for each event. Annually, they pay seventy-five dollars for a permit.
I think it's each event. Do you know, happen to know?
So it usually is each event, but if you listed them all together, I believe they have to let you know in the council meeting which event they are participating at. And then they would be able to participate in all of them.
Right.
But that's per truck, correct? Per truck would have to list them.
Each truck. But so if they have to get something for every time that they're out on the streets of North Smithfield, and I don't want to put the blame on it, we'll just use Sunrise on the Street. Is that the name of his truck? Tony Solly's truck?
Sunny Side.
Huh?
Sunny Side or something.
Sunny Side. Right. He's out numerous locations throughout the town. He doesn't get a permit every time he's out, does he? He doesn't pay seventy-five dollars every day that he's out on the street of North Smithfield. He pays seventy-five dollars and he can be on the street of North Smithfield for the year. And I'm thinking if any of these, we've already given them their license, so to speak, free, like Mickey G's, like Mickey G's and some of these others.
Yeah.
We voted on that.
I'm sorry, but I think the ordinance is they're supposed to get permit every function they go to in North Smithfield.
Yeah, because I thought that was the issue with the summer concert series.
Right. They have to, they have to get a permit for it. So that way, if they go to a party in town, they have to go and get a permit for that party, right? So that way, it's kind of how we're, I guess, monitoring who's doing business in town. But I think going forward, we might want to bring that ordinance back up and kind of modify it because it does seem a little, that's a little crazy.
Can we put it back on the agenda for next month and we can revisit it? We'll have time, we'll have time to take action before the event. And we'll revisit it and if we need to. I thought that it was a one-time fee and it covered them for the year. They bought a license to, like a peddler's license. Peddler's license is for a specific event. You've got to get that every time you want it to be a peddler. But I thought that like an ice cream truck, the delus lemonade truck, those guys, they paid a permit and they were good to go. It didn't matter where they were. And I think the food trucks fit into that same thing. And it was just that they need the state license and then they pay a seventy-five dollar fee. If they don't have a license with us previously, then when they come to an event, then they have to get a permit.
We can look at it.
So as long as they've already done a permit, I think that they're good. But let's put it on the agenda and we'll review it and make sure.
I think council, if you recall the conversation when I was on council, it was Sunny Side on the Street. He was applying to be over at...
Yeah, he was like at four places.
And I said, "Why not?" And I think we did finally decide just to certain five dollars and pick it up.
But I think he said he was gonna do certain D's, so that was his way of getting it one per...
He was the location of all of that one D. It was all the locations were paid under that one D.
Right.
Now, the question I would have is some of the other vendors that are not, have not pulled a license, they're coming from Warwick and from Providence. It's the question, I know we were there fees. I would say, have we get a license for seventy-five dollars and come to town? But we also, but we also did it to protect our local established restaurants and businesses. Because we didn't want to have the, have a large influx, influx of wheels, wheels on wheels.
No, she's right. I think that if they want to, if we're gonna have an event, they want to have... Why don't we, we can just do this. If they didn't already pay the seventy-five dollar fee, then the seventy-five dollar fee will be waived. But we can wait until next week to do that, until we figure out.
We'll review it. We can review it next meeting.
Yeah, and maybe we need to, you know, maybe we need to...
If we need to revise it, we can revise it. But David, do a little research for us on it. Thank you.
So are we gonna review it and then also possibly have the ability to waive?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then by then, I'll see if they have a list of the trucks that are definitely coming, just so we know. But I don't think it's gonna be that detailed.
It may be one of those barbecue guys that was coming to the...
Ray, were you, were you hearing anything? Did I miss you?
No.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Last time they did it, they had a guy that did barbecue. I don't even think he had a truck though. He just set up, he set up his smoker. He didn't come like with a, he set up his smoker and he had stuff going over at the vegetable stand. And they had somebody up at the peach orchard from their own group cooking like hot dogs and stuff. Because the hayride was going like in a loop. It would go to the barn and pick up people and then it would stop at the peach farm, pick up people and then it would go out in the woods. And they just kept looping two trailers. I was there all day. They had a good turnout. Unfortunately, COVID kind of put the skids on their momentum, but hopefully they'll get it back going again. It was, it was pretty well attended.
I bounced around a lot. Did I miss anything? Is anything, did we cover everything?
I think we did.
Okay, all entertaining, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.